I haven't had that much support this year. So, yes, I'm not sure what we're going to do. I know. Yeah, we need it.
We will. We will. Should we be writing them?
Probably seven, these ones.
Well, we're not going to write it down.
Yeah.
Yeah. Make up pretty good losses. Really paying for two hours around.
Right.
You go in front of the North, and shows them you're snowing.
No, we don't like that. We need to clean things up a little bit. Really, do we need the moisture? Eric, do you know if it's going to be dry if we don't get some moisture? Are we okay after this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right. I figured we'd be okay, but... Right, I know, that's what always worries me.
Northwest Island, they went to Crimson Three.
Oh, were they?
Yeah.
It was a summer more.
Yeah.
Even the Shell Rock, I hear, is up pretty.
I noticed that, yeah.
I just printed my lessons for tomorrow.
Yeah, I think they got them down. It's like here on the board. It's come up. Probably six, eight inches from last twenty-four hours or so. Down by Shore. Yeah, but they've been looking more through, and then it's finally above the damn here.
No, we don't. We might.
Green.
Oh, green.
They don't stay there. Boil them pretty good below the...
Place J C always wanted to go to.
What's that?
That's the place J C always wanted to go to.
Yeah.
We're down to...
We're trying to see if they should keep it closed until it's now. Yeah?
Yeah. They're really good.
And that we didn't show up. It was band-aid after band-aid after band-aid.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order because it's o'clock. The first item on the agenda is to review the agenda for tonight. See any changes, additions to the agenda? If not, someone to approve the agenda?
Make motion to approve.
Get me a second.
Second.
Thanks, Addison. All in favor signify with a aye. Aye. Both the same. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the hearing of the 2021 school year. School calendar, excuse me?
School calendar, we build a lot, just in the same manners this year. We put three professional development days at the start of the year. We've already approved the speaker for two of those days. School would start on the 24th by statute. And parent teacher conferences, the 27th and 29th of October. Teacher comp day on the 30th. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday off Thanksgiving. Two full weeks at Christmas. Christmas break would start on December 18th. We would come back with professional development day on the 4th of January. And students back on the 5th. We have a professional development day on February 19th, which is also the Friday of the state wrestling tournament. We had some suggestions that we do it that way this year instead of having the Monday off that week. 9th and 11th of March would be parent teacher conferences. 12th would be the teacher comp day. Spring break would be the week of the 15th through the 19th. Professional development on the 22nd. We have Good Friday off and Monday following Easter. And then professional development on the 6th of April. Graduation, seniors' last day would be the 19th of May. Graduation commencement on the 23rd. It's wrong on the right side of the calendar. I have March the 22nd as the throw button. And then last day of school would be the 26th of May and teacher work day on the 27th. We did make a couple of suggestions at the request of the leadership team and athletics department, so...
Any questions from anyone on the calendar?
Good.
And we approve that later, right?
Yeah. We just need to close the hearing.
Okay, so make a motion to close the hearing?
Don't make a motion.
Okay, then the hearing is closed, thank you. Okay, review and approve the minutes from the February meeting? Any items of change or any issues? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
A second. All in favor signify with aye. Aye. Both the same. Motion carried. Doesn't look like, is there any public items of discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Skip the point. The next item is to review and approve the financial report.
While you're looking through the bills, general fund balance is about 1.48 million. Capital is 148,912. Save, one cent sales taxes, 393,840. Debt service, 43,188. Management, 142,832. Nutrition, 76,124. Activity, 19,958. And trust made to see, 124,23.
It is now a good time to, if anyone had questions on the revenue report that it showed in the U.S., if anyone had any questions, comments on that? Revenue report.
Revenue report, yes, yeah.
Is that what you're looking for?
No, no.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that up in case anyone had any additional questions on it, but that was helpful. Appreciate that.
Question on the bills, page nine, I think it was, Cedar Falls equipment lease. What was that?
For River Hills, we bill for the...
Maintenance.
For their copy release. Everybody that has children that attend River Hills, all the other districts, have to pay a portion of that copy release.
Okay.
Copy release.
Okay.
Is that the case with other equipment that they have or just copy?
It's just a lease.
Okay, it's a lease? Okay, because it's a lease arrangement?
Yeah.
Then I always question it too, is there water leak here in the green school? There's a huge difference between Allison Green.
Any idea why that is?
It's a raze.
Purate?
I use a little more water. You know, those high school sports and stuff. You know, D classes and that kind of stuff versus the elementary.
Thousand dollar difference, so.
What's that?
Thousand dollar difference.
We want our kids to be squeaky clean so they won't spread the virus.
You didn't have to go there. That's all I had.
Anyone else have any questions on the financial report? Not, can I get a motion to approve the financial report?
I'll make a motion.
John, in second. You have a second? All in favor signify with aye. Aye. Both the same. Motion carried. Any now public items of discussion? Okay?
Are we okay to talk during this time? Public, are you at the public discussion?
Yes.
So this is a time where I can talk?
We didn't, you didn't request before that?
Well, I did request.
Well, you requested to present, and I got, when I pulled the agenda yesterday.
So what I'm asking is, can I talk now since it says public discussion items?
Typically, we have to get it on the agenda. And I thought we had talked about setting a special meeting.
Okay, but, but what is the purpose of a public discussion item if I have? I mean, nothing says I have to have it pre-approved.
Board policy does.
And where is board, I mean, how do, how do we know? Okay, so you won't let me speak tonight?
Well, not according to the board policy is.
During the football agreement, we got to talk. We signed up that night.
Yeah.
So why is it different tonight than it was during that night? Why, I mean, why are board meetings different?
Why are board meetings...
Because that was set up for that purpose. And it was set up to have a register to talk at the start.
Right, and we had it registered and people signed it.
Okay, so is this public knowledge? Should I, I mean, how would I have known that?
It's in board policy.
I don't, how do I know what board policy is?
Well, listen, we can, we can get, we can get this taken care of. We were setting, we talked this afternoon. And we were going to set up a time to meet with you specifically in the next day or two.
Okay.
I sent you an email.
Well, I was gone yesterday and not today.
Well, I sent you an email this afternoon.
Okay.
But are you presenting the proposal?
I'm not presenting a proposal, no. I was just going to talk to the board.
I guess before I was on, I was always understanding if you wanted to talk during the public meeting that you had to be put on the agenda, so...
Technically, I was put on the agenda and I got deleted.
I don't know about that.
Well, and we talked about that this morning.
I know, but why?
Because, because it wasn't on the last agenda that was posted.
I know, so...
And it's not something that can't wait for us to post in the meeting.
You're right, I was just going to discuss about what had happened. And there's two items that have been deleted off the agenda. That were supposed to, that were posted on Friday outside our building. And then as of yesterday, they were different, so I...
Because I needed to add, and I explained that to you this morning, Jennifer, that I added some things yesterday. When I did it, I pulled, I pulled the original agenda down. And we posted the last one, so we can't go back and redo what was on there.
In lieu of getting our hand slap from the state here about six months ago, we're not changing the agenda at this point. So we'll have to set up another meeting and go through the process because I'm not getting a fine from the state for changing the agenda in the middle of the meeting.
Understand, totally understand. But part of the agenda actually says public discussion items. So I thought maybe I could discuss, and I didn't realize that that, you had to be pre-approved and...
Supposed to be on the agenda that you're presenting something. That way, if anybody else got questions or wants to hear what's going on there, you're supposed to be able to be there too.
It's just like with the board items of discussion. We have to have those itemized in terms of what we're going to talk about.
Okay.
So, sorry, but we will set up another meeting to discuss. Okay, so we'll move on to the board items of discussion.
Um, let's see.
Presentation of the ice cream.
Yeah, and Mrs. Holmes can't be here.
Okay.
Mrs. Holmes talked to some, the leadership team, and they would, this is just kind of conversation at this point. But she loaded the information. They would like to change the senior release to include any time where the kids don't have class instead of putting them in classes that they don't necessarily need and don't necessarily want to be in. That's basically the bottom line. And, you know, I think, I think that's a good thing to look at. Usually, if you run into discipline with those upperclassmen, it's because we put them somewhere that they don't want to be and don't need to be, so...
And are we talking about seniors only? So it's a senior release program, so you have to be senior?
Generally, I think, yes.
Okay.
I read through the document that was attached, and it looks pretty thorough to me. It's got a lot of details for what is required of the students in order to qualify. And what is, like, necessary for them to continue to be qualified, you know? They have to maintain their grades, they have to be in certain places within school during their release if they're present, otherwise, you know, they have to be off from system. So it looks like it's very well put together in my opinion.
Okay.
And it's the information at this point, because it's up to schedule. We want to take the last three hours off in the day to work or... They could, yes. Yep, and we'll also, we're hopefully going to work with some people like I was talking about the day before the meeting. And the state's going to allow us some pathways with career and tech ed and actually even with some of the other classes. As long as we have teachers who are certified in an area, we can put together a class that meets certain standards and give credits for it as long as we can find a SCET code for it.
I think it's also important to mention that they can't dispel their, their schedule widths, senior release hours.
Right.
They have to release five.
Yep.
Year to a day of their class, so...
And some of those classes, like right now, we have kids that go to night for morning.
Sure, okay, okay. That was my only question.
They're all covered there, eligibility if they didn't pass. They have to come back, so...
So at this point, it's just, just something for us to think about? And then we'll add a later date that was being brought up.
Yes.
Approval. Okay.
She just wanted to get the...
Yep. Next one is the presentation of the Title I program.
And Mrs. Tracy's not able to be here to bring it out tonight because of conferences, so...
Okay, so that will be tabled, so it's...
Yeah. We wanted to have Mrs. Markstad come up and just kind of show what she, where she knows some of the curriculum that's out here.
Okay. And then we've had one item left there.
We've been talking, I've talked to Mrs. Augie and Mrs. Holmes several times. And in the past, we've had a student board representative. And Mrs. Augie's going to send out an application so we can get some student, get a student rep on the board again. So hopefully, we'll have some of that next month and have some applications for it.
You willing to add that, Addison?
I think it's good of you.
All right, so we'll move to item eight, which is to approve the 2021 school calendar. Need to further discussion on it?
I'll make a motion to approve the school calendar for the 2020, 2021 school year.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Addison, seconds. All in favor signify with aye. Aye. Both the same. Motion carried. Item nine, is approved addition of a computer science program?
If you look, Mrs. Holmes loaded up the plan of study, the course of study for what we would have if we had a computer science program. We've had a lot of discussion about this. And it's the direction a lot of schools are going. We are required by law now to start offering a year of computer science. And if we're going to offer a year of it, we probably might as well just get into it a peak burst and go full bore, so... I'd recommend we add computer science programs.
Who's going to new charge that or teach it or?
Would have to hire.
Okay.
They do have to be certified in computer science to teach it.
True.
I like the courses and the classes. Will they go long run?
No, it's going to be, there's a lot of career openings there, and there's short, a lot of kids.
Need further discussion?
This will be added next year?
Yes.
Start the ball.
Need further discussion on it? I think we had looked at it and said we thought it would be good for our students to have this available, so... Entertain a motion to approve the addition of the computer science program?
I'll make the motion to approve the addition of the computer science program.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, sitting in front of aye? Aye. The call is the same. Motion carried. Okay, update on building use policy for Sundays?
We'd had some complaints in the other district that I work at about building use on Sundays, and it just kind of scared it over here a little bit. And we think it's just a good policy to follow that, for the most part, we don't allow activities, at least with our students, before noon on Sunday. They need a break at some point and to be able to be kids. There are some times we'll need to make exceptions because I know that we do have, like, the Oma for breakfast. I can do that on a Saturday though. But there, there might be activities where we need to have a community group need to use the building facilities on a Sunday morning. So those things, we come back, we just need to have them apply to the board and bring it to the board.
And that was it for this, just...
That's the only change.
On Sunday mornings, not until noon.
Right, yep.
Do we have, do we, to quote, have a paper for somebody? Does this going to affect anybody?
Not very much, and that's why we left it in there so that if, if there's something that needs to come in, then we have to go in for the board and say, yeah, we can allow that one. It's more than anything to give our kids a break on Sunday morning. And if families want to take their kids to church, then they can.
So the coach would anything would come in and request that they could talk to you? Use it before noon?
Yep.
Because of the time the way it is?
And then we get them into...
The board.
Okay, yep.
Running to any, any concerns at all, points that was implemented were there?
We're, yes, we're just making the change over there, too. Well, it has, yeah, but we had some people that were violating it.
Okay.
And it actually has been in our policy here, just kind of trying to reinforce it.
Just whatever's in the on scene.
Yep.
But there has been no problems here, just over there?
No, yep.
As long as you can try to come...
I also, I will tell you that I have had some concerns from the athletic directors that we need to update this just a little bit. Because we have some outside groups that are scheduling so far out that it's hard for our in-season people to get gym time sometimes. So we need to make sure we take a look next, they're supposed to take Friday.
So would that be something that would need to be changed in this policy too?
It might eventually, but will, I don't think it necessarily needs to be changed. I think it's the way that we're addressing everything in the building. So we'll, we'll sit down and talk to them about that.
I just thought if it needed to be changed, maybe we could wait and change it all at one time to incorporate...
I think it already says it in there, it's just that we need to kind of look through it a little bit better when we come in later.
Okay, okay, so it's not something that we'd actually have to change in within the policy?
Right.
Any other questions on it or concerns about making that change?
I'll make a motion to approve the update of the building use policy for Sundays.
Second? Second? All in favor, signify with aye? Aye. The call is the same. Motion carried. Okay, approve classified staff letters of assignment.
Last year, we didn't approve our classified staff letters until, I believe it was July. And I don't think it's right that we made those people sit by and wait till we're done with our other negotiations. John and I kind of looked at where we're at, you know, we raised our, raised all our people up to $12 an hour a couple of years ago. And in order, I think in order to keep pace, we give our people that are hourly 35 cents an hour this year. And then we have a couple of our classified staff that are salaried. And I would recommend that we just give those, those two $1,000 ease.
And that would get us in line, so...
That keeps us, that keeps us in line with where most of our neighbors in conference schools are having.
What we need to try to do.
Yep. Plus, it gives our hourly people the security, knowing that we've taken care of them already instead of waiting all of July or August and not knowing what's going to happen.
Well, I know that was difficult last year, so...
Yeah, it still was a battle last year.
So this way, they would have the confidence knowing what, what it looks like, which I think is important. Any concerns about going ahead with that now? Or any additional questions on it? I think it's pretty straightforward.
I'll call the class, we should go.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, well, I entertain a motion then to approve classified staff letters of assignment. And we're looking at 35 cents an hour, but for those, there's $3,000 a year.
Make a motion.
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay. All in favor, sitting in front of aye? Aye. The call is the same. Motion carried.
Next item is, we got a request again for the adult softball league to use the field down there.
They've done that for the last...
Last four, four, five years, I think.
I think, I think we've just made the stipulation that, you know, they got to remember our school grounds.
There's been any issues with it?
I've not had anything.
It was right at first, but we got that straightened out.
I haven't had anything brought to me about it, so...
It's something good for the community.
We have a lot of staff numbers that just...
Any questions about the adult softball league?
I'll make a motion to approve the league using the field.
Okay, you get a second? All in favor, signify with aye? Aye. The call is the same. Motion carried. Approve sharing agreements with Clarksville School for HR, business manager, superintendent, librarian?
Clarksville's board approved these last night. It's just a continuation of the things that we currently have in place.
I'll make a motion to approve.
They're all 60, 40?
No.
I'm 50, 50, he's 60, 40, and the board is...
Seven, 525. And Mary is...
Can you say those louder so we can hear them, please?
Just ask to say them louder so they could hear. They couldn't hear what we were saying. So the superintendent is 60, 40, right? Business manager, you're 50, 50. HR was...
75, 25. And librarian is .1.
Good. 10%?
Yep. Yep, they have to have library and...
Did you hear that?
Thank you.
All right, sure. Okay, so we're just, it would just be a continuation of what's already in place? Seems to be...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the 280 agreements to keep those in place.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, signify with aye? Aye. The call is the same. Motion carried. Okay, we'll move on to personnel.
Resignations, we have Josie Finney from her positions as play director and assistant varsity volleyball, Doug Phelps from custodian at the Allison Building, and Emily Abbott as art teacher. Contracts, we have Dean Weber as long-term sub, Jody Johnson, FFA advisor for 20 days over the summer. And then we have approved one sub associate, and that is Emily Dietz. So I would recommend that we go forward with those personnel items.
Questions from anyone? Straightforward?
I want you to approve the personnel items as a whole.
Okay, get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, signify with aye?
Aye.
The call is the same. Motion carried. Okay, we'll move on to admin reports. Hopefully, we've all had a chance to look at those. Looked like they had some good professional developments. There was a report on speakers, and they had some good things going on there. I attended, I think Amanda, you were at the event they had at the elementary school for the kids, which...
Which one?
The, um, the reading, the reading. And that looked like that was very well attended. So that was well done, Mrs. Tracy and her crew down there. So that was, that was good. The play that the middle school did, that looked like the kids were really having fun. And so that was, that was good also, so...
I don't have a lot this month. I know Mark has been talking to Schroders about the parking lot over here. We're going to put in double driveway towards the south end of the parking lot. And we're going to put up a fence across the, the north end. So hopefully, people will stop parking near all this driveway in their yard. Trying to, trying to be good neighbors with them there. And I understand them getting upset when people park in the yard and block them in when they're on the ambulance, so... We had three teachers scheduled to go to a conference in Los Angeles this weekend. That conference got canceled the other day due to the coronavirus. My guess is that we're going to be dealing with some more of that, with some of the stuff that we've got scheduled coming up. And then, like I, I believe I told you last month, we met to discuss the regional academy with Hawkeye, the A A, and Nashville Plainfield. And I think we're going to meet probably about the first week in April. And that next meeting's going to be at the building.
And that next meeting's going to be a building in Plainfield. Hawkeye had shown some interest in that because it was an existing structure and it was in pretty good shape, had a shop area, classrooms already. And that way we can draw maybe all the way up to Leonton, over to Toba, Toba has showed some interest. My understanding is that they are going to attend the next meeting. So hopefully we'll get that going forward and get that started for the fall of twenty-one.
What building is it in Plainfield?
It's the old school building.
The old school building, okay, okay. All right.
We do have applicants for language arts position. We have an interview tomorrow for the Spanish position, so we got, we got things starting to roll in. My understanding is the applicant for the language arts position is very good. The, the Spanish position applicant is currently student teaching with our former Spanish teacher on Charles City. And she sent her down here to apply, so. So hopefully we'll have that one filled in the near future.
Okay.
I do think that some of our young teachers are really doing a nice job, they got some really good things happening. We've had a lot of student teachers in. Mrs. Abbott, who just, whose resignation we acted on tonight, her and her husband are both going to Norton Kensington. Her husband was student teaching with Mrs. Miller. And he had some very good things to say about Mrs. Miller and the things that she does in the math program and how much that she helped him while he was here. So, you know, I think, I think it speaks well of our teaching staff that we have Warren Berg and you on I and Upper Island. Everybody else wants to place teachers in our district.
Good.
And, and that is why Mrs. Abbott is leaving is because Northwood wanted to hire them both. And we've been trying to find him a job around here and there just was nobody around here looking for him at this point.
Any else on the admin reports? Questions? Okay. All right, to adjournments, so I will take motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor, signify with aye? Aye. Pose the same. Motion carried.
Lucky you. Yeah, get ready, it's great.